I think we'll go ahead then and start with the roll call.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Commissioner Krasky.
Chair.
Commissioner Clifford.
Present.
Commissioner Gordon.
Here.
Chair Nibblin.
Here.
Vice Chair Cooper.
Present.
Commissioner Stedgen.
Here.
And Commissioner Campbell is absent.
Thank you. Then we'll move on to the salute to the flag, and I'll ask Commissioner Krasky to lead us.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Commissioner Krasky. Moving on then to administrative business, the first item of administrative business is approval of order of the agenda. Can I get a motion to approve the order of agenda? Commissioner Clifford.
I move to approve the order of agenda.
Commissioner Gordon.
Second.
Okay, we've got a motion of second. We can go ahead and vote. Well, we had, um...
Dan, is that...
No, that's correct. I was going to see if we could move the new public hearing before the continued hearing. It seems like that's a relatively minor event compared to the San Pedro Terrace one. And just in terms of getting people in and out of here, I was going to suggest that, which is why my light was on.
I see. My apologies.
The worst.
I thought you were moving or looking to second the motion.
The worst.
Well, you know, I think I'm going to go forward with the order of the agenda as it is, given the vote that we have.
With your own, thank you.
Thank you. And now we've got, as the next item of administrative business, two sets of minutes, November 6th, 2017's minutes, and November 20th, 2017. I suppose it might be most efficient to just take these one at a time. I guess we'll start with the November 6th, 2017 minutes. Before I ask for a motion on them, I guess I'll see if there's any discussion. I see a couple of lights. I'll start then with Commissioner Clifford.
Well, actually, I was going to make a motion, so...
Okay. I saw another light. Okay, excellent. Well, I guess then I will turn to Commissioner Clifford and entertain your motion.
Okay. I would like to make the motion to approve the minutes of November 6th, 2017.
And Commissioner Cooper.
I'll second the motion.
Okay, motion of second. Go ahead and vote. And those are unanimously approved by everyone present. November 20th, 2017, I guess I'll first ask if anybody has any comments or discussion with respect to the minutes. Commissioner Clifford, I see your light.
I do have one correction. It's just, it's a really minor typo. On page five of 32, down where the Assistant Attorney says, "And it's after the word proofing, and that looks like it should be 'and' it would be, not 'ant.'"
Okay. All right. Well, I'll go ahead and...
Other than that, I would make a motion to approve these minutes.
Okay. Well, I'll go ahead and look to staff to go ahead and make that administrative correction. I don't see any other comments, so I guess I'll go ahead and entertain your motion then. Is there a second?
Okay. With that correction, I move to approve the minutes for November 20th, 2017.
Commissioner Gordon.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion of second. Why don't you go ahead and vote? I'd say unanimously approved by everyone present, so thanks very much. That moves us past the approval of minutes and takes us then to designation of liaison to the City Council meeting. I see that we don't, according to the agenda, need one. I'll just confirm that remains the case.
That's correct.
Okay, excellent. So we'll then come to the portion of the agenda that's available for oral communications. And this is the, again, the portion of the agenda available to the public to address the Planning Commission on any issue within the subject matter jurisdiction of the commission that is not on the agenda. The time allowed for any speaker will be three minutes. I actually have a speaker card for Corina Cardenas. I don't know if Ms. Cardenas wants to come forward and make a comment.
Hi, happy Tuesday night. I am currently operating West Manor Wellness at 35 West Manor. And with all the new cannabis regulations and zoning, it looks like my location was excluded due to a 600-foot buffer zone. After our meeting, our first compliance meeting, and also, we had Mr. Campbell present today at the location. He suggested I come to you and ask to be placed on the agenda to see if we can maybe change the zoning to a 500-foot buffer if you have to cross a highway. It would be the only location that's affected in Pacifica that would fit under that criteria. It looks like the north end of Pacifica doesn't have any retail operations. And after exhausting all of my options throughout California and all of the green locations, it looks like, you know, there's no locations available. And the ones that are available are already, you know, spoken for. But it seems to be concentrated in the very small back end of the city. And I'm already currently operating on the north end, and there seems to be an option to be able to change the buffer zone. So I was hoping to be placed on the agenda so that we can discuss that. And I'm hopefully giving all the information that I can think of. So hopefully, we can be placed on the agenda to discuss that and see if we can change the buffer zone to 500 if it is for that crossing of the highway through the walkway. So, yeah, that's what I have to say.
Thank you, Ms. Cardenas. And we'll go ahead and, you know, sort of refer the matter to city staff and ask that they give that due consideration.
Yes, we will. Thank you.
Thank you. I don't see any other speaker cards, but I would just, again, take one more check and see if there's anybody else interested in addressing the commission under oral communications. And seeing no one, then we will just move along. We don't have any consent items on the agenda this evening, so we'll move then to the continued public hearing that we have for this evening, which is General Plan Amendment, GPA 9316, rezoning, RZ 19516, subdivision, SUB 23416, and authorization to remove heritage trees submitted by applicant Michael O'Connell of Roundhouse Industries to change the general plan land use designation from high-density residential to low-density residential, to change zoning classifications from C3 zoning district to R1, and various other matters related to that pertaining to, let's see, a residential lot. I'm looking for an address, "At the western terminus of San Pedro Terrace Road in Pacifica, APN 023075050. The recommended sequoia action is a mitigated negative declaration and mitigation monitoring and reporting program have been prepared and are recommended for approval. The recommended action is to recommend to the City Council approval of the general plan amendments and rezoning and approve the subdivision and heritage tree removal as conditioned." I know this is a continued item, and there was a staff report, however, addressing some of the matters that had been remaining after we last had this item before us. So I'll ask staff to go ahead and brief us on the additional items that have been presented.
Thank you. Good evening, Chair. Good evening, Commissioners. I'm Assistant Planner Robert Smith, and I'll be giving a presentation on this project. As you mentioned, this is a continued item from the Planning Commission of November 20th, at which point commissioners asked for additional information that included clarification and justification for the 25-foot buffer. They requested the status of the federal and state permits from the applicant, which has been provided. There was also questions over the density that was being proposed at the site, and the ability of the future property owners to subdivide the larger lots. As you recall, the main form of the proposal was for six residential lots and the private street. And the main amendment from the November 20th meeting is the elimination of the cul-de-sac, which was provided for fire access, and its replacement with a fire-access compliant hammerhead turnaround.
Mm-hmm.
The consequence of these amendments result in rearrangement of the lot configuration and a reduction in the site disturbance for street construction. And the applicant is retaining the 25-foot buffer. The applicant has also provided dimensions for the distance from the top of the bank for clarity in relation to the 25-feet setback. And the dimension lines range from 6 feet to 24 feet across the site. The motion for approval remains the same. It includes the sequoia requirements for the mitigated negative declaration, and as you mentioned, the general plan rezoning, subdivision, and heritage tree removal. The applicant is available for questions as are staff, should you have them.
Thank you so much. I guess then we'll start and see if any of the members of the commission have questions for staff with respect to any of the supplemental material that we've received here. And Commissioner Stedgen, is that your light?
Yeah, that is. I have a contact disclosure. I had unscheduled two-way communications with two folks regarding this issue. The first is a mortgage broker named Jim Alex, who's an acquaintance of the developer. The second is a representative of San Pedro Creek Foundation named Roger Macio. Thank you.
Thank you. Let's see. Commissioner Clifford, did you have a...
I had a quick question for staff. In going through all of the data, I noted that the negative deck document has the old tentative map in it, tentative layout in it. Is that going to be changed if we approve this layout in terms of it be, the maps being switched out?
The mitigated negative declaration that is in the pack is the one that was distributed for public review and was obviously sent out prior to this more recent amendment.
So I don't believe that the amended map would change any of the conclusions of the document. So it is not typical that we would go back and change that. I guess I was thinking that we could put some note to the file, but it's all going to be part of the file.
I just, I saw that there was, the original that was presented to us is in the negative deck, and that there is now a new layout proposed. I didn't, I did not think or reason that there was any actual change in the, in most of the impacts, or any of the actual impacts in terms of the negative deck. But I just wanted to comment and also question whether or not that was going to be changed out. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Commissioner Cooper.
Thank you, Chair. I just have a couple of questions. The, this is a private drive, correct, on this area?
Correct.
Is there parking along the street there? I see, I see some designation. I guess there's no parking where the hammerhead is, but there's parking along the street in front of the residence?
Correct.
And are they going to provide a sign that says, "No parking, private drive" in front? Is that the intent here?
There's no intention for signage to record it as a private drive, as far as I'm aware.
Okay.
There's no conditions to that effect either.
I know it's a well-visited area, as far as people walking their dog and whatnot. I'm just kind of curious if people were allowed to park in that area. And then they would be responsible for policing the people parking on the private drive.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Gordon.
Thanks, Chair. I'm trying to get a sense, a better visual sense of how the project's been pulled back from the riparian corridor. You had a slide that was pretty, if you could just go back and just do a couple run-throughs of that, those comparisons, that would be really helpful visually.
So you'll see that the way that the street, the private street, has been reconfigured, it significantly reduces the hardscaping towards the center of the site, and the hammerhead takes a lot less of the project site area, which has allowed the applicant to rearrange the configuration of the lots, still retaining the R1 development standards for the lots 1 to 4. And then 5 and 6 also changed slightly as well. So you'll note that the lot to the north of this slide, which is Lot 4, has been removed. And the knock-on effect of that is that the rear yards in the new lots 1 to 4 set significantly further back from the 25-foot setback.
Is it the case, so it doesn't look like the setback itself, if that's what that blue line is, has actually moved?
Correct.
But there's no anticipation there'll be building in, I guess, outside that envelope that's illustrated up there?
So the grayed area is an indicative mark of where development is likely to take place.
Uh-huh.
So that's not necessarily the final location of the buildings, but certainly the condition that we've crafted ensures that there's no structural development beyond the setback line. So we wouldn't expect to see construction towards the creek.
But the setback line has essentially remained the same?
Correct.
Okay.
Could you just go back to the other slide again? So it's really the elimination of, or the relocation of Number 4 is really the significant change?
Predominantly, yes.
Thank you.
Okay. Well, it looks like that's the extent of questions and comments from the commission at this point, given what staff has shared. I think then we'll move on to the public hearing, and we'll ask if the applicant has anything that the applicant would like to state at this point with respect to these matters.
Good evening, Commissioners. My name is Mike O'Connell. I'm the agent for the applicant. First, let me start by stating that the conditions of approval are acceptable. A few of them changed, but still acceptable to the applicant. After the last meeting, we met with the San Pedro Creek Watershed Coalition and, you know, kind of brainstormed with ideas for a revised site plan to try to pull things away from the creek a little bit. And I met with Paul and a couple of his colleagues out there and showed him the revised layout with the hammerhead and the reconfigured Lot 4, how it kind of went from being behind 1 and 3 to more, you know, what you'd see in a traditional subdivision where it's just right off the street. And I think that's acceptable to the coalition, and they sent an email to the planning department to that effect. The one thing that we've been working on is an agreement for the buffer area that would provide rights to the watershed coalition under certain specific conditions, like they've got, you know, funding for an approved project to do some creek restoration, and they'd like to expand that work into this buffer. And so that's acceptable to the applicant. We were hoping that this would get folded into a condition of approval, but I think staff feels that there's not a nexus for it. So that's something we asked the commission to consider. If it can't be a condition, the applicant's more than happy to enter into this agreement with the watershed coalition. We have a draft agreement that I brought with me tonight. We've sent that to the coalition. I think that's more or less acceptable to them. We've got some, you know, legal fine-tuning to do on that, because it is an agreement that would get recorded and become, you know, a legal document. Couple other things I wanted to point out about the new site plan. Eliminating the cul-de-sac and using the hammerhead reduced the impervious area, the pavement area, by about 10%. And we also changed the width of the road, the curb-to-curb width, from 32 feet to 28 feet. So that still leaves 20 feet clear for travel lanes and fire access, and 8 feet for parking along one side of the street. I wanted to touch on a couple items about the buffer and how you decide what the correct width is. It's not an exact science, but there's a few things that are important to consider, you know. And what we want to consider is, what's the buffer trying to achieve? And there's three primary goals, which is, one is to reduce erosion and sedimentation in the creek. And so this is a function of the slope of the site. The site's very flat. The grading plan is designed a slope away from the top of the bank, and so that all helps reduce erosion. Also, because the site is so, has such a gentle slope, that's going to promote infiltration, which is going to help reduce erosion. So we're trying to slow down that overland flow, and we're kind of using the gentle slope of the site to do that. Also, the vegetation in the riparian buffer is going to help reduce that, the speed of that flow. The other thing that you want to consider is water quality. And so the different thing about this project, as it relates to, like, just talking about general buffers, is this, this project actually includes a stormwater treatment system. And so, you know, the water is going to run off from the, it'll slope away from the top of the bank and towards the street and to the treatment system, and it's going to be treated before it gets to the creek. Also, the riparian, or the vegetation that's planted in the riparian buffer helps eliminate contaminants. And then the last thing that you're trying to do is, you know, expand the habitat. And so by planting the native plants and some of the conditions regarding the restrictions of use in this area are going to kind of help expand the habitat along the creek a little bit. I also wanted to give you an update on the status of the federal permits. So those are moving along. And at the last meeting, you know, the stream and lake bed alteration agreement was deemed complete. So that permit with the California Department of Fish and Game is complete. What we're working on now is the 404 permit, which is the Army Corps permit. Army Corps refers the permit as a consultation to the National Marine Fishery Services, who, I think it was like the day after the last planning commission hearing, issued a letter of concurrence to the Army Corps of Engineer. And then we're currently working on closing the loop with U.S. Fish and Wildlife Services. So there, last week, they deemed the proposed mitigations acceptable. And this morning, they issued a draft project description. So the next step for Fish and Wildlife Services is to issue their biological opinion. At that time, Army Corps can issue this permit. The next permit, after Army Corps issues the permit, is called a 401 permit, and that's through the Regional Water Quality Control Board. And they need a few things to issue their permit. The first is the Army Corps permit, but they also need a SEQUA document. So they can't really act until we get through this process. But they have indicated to me that they're drafting the permit in anticipation of Fish and Wildlife Services completing their requirements with Army Corps, and Army Corps issuing the permit, as well as the SEQUA document. So that's kind of the current status of the federal permits. I think there might have been a reference in the staff report that said the Fish and Wildlife Services 401 permit, but that's not, that's not true. Army Corps issues that permit. So Commissioner Clifford had a question about the revised site plan and the SEQUA document. I think it's important to note that the SEQUA consultant reviewed the revised site plan, and they issued a memo stating that the changes wouldn't warrant any additional study. And I believe that's part of the document now. So whether or not that, you know, that map gets updated, we do have that backup documentation from the SEQUA consultant. I think that's all I have. So I'm here to answer any more questions if you have them.
Thank you. Well, I guess it looks like there might be a question. I'll go ahead and let...
And it's actually relatively minor. It's something I touched on at our last meeting. And my understanding is that you're going to be proposing the language on the signs in terms of keeping people out and the...
Correct.
...weeding and all that stuff. And I mentioned at the last meeting that I'm very concerned about the use of chemicals that might get into the creek as a way of weed control. I'm specifically thinking of Roundup, but I know there are...
Sure.
...a multitude that fall under that category. And I would really like to have on that sign that there is no, those chemicals are prohibited. I don't know if you're open to that or not, but that's...
It could be, that could be a rather large sign, depending on that list of chemicals. But I think we can work with staff on, you know, what that, what that language says.
Thank you very much.
Commissioner Gordon.
Sure. First, I want to commend you on working collaboratively with Coalition. That's really, really important.
Yeah, thanks. They've been good to work with.
You mentioned there was some email correspondence where, with the Coalition, where they were indicating their comfort level with the project as revised.
Yeah, I believe that was sent to Tina.
And has that been shared with us? I can't, don't remember.
So the email correspondence I recall is, was before we received the current plan.
Oh, okay.
And so it was in general, if things could be moved away from the creek, that would be great. But it wasn't something we received, like, since the packet was published, for example.
Got it. Okay. Thanks.
Thank you. Commissioner Stedgen.
I have a couple of questions. My first is on packet page 302, which is a letter from Department of Fish and Wildlife. And I'm just going to read this paragraph here and allow you to respond. "As the California Department of Fish and Wildlife explained in a previous letter to you dated Feb. 19, 2017, CDFW had until April 20, 2017 to submit a draft lake or stream bed alteration agreement to you or inform you that an agreement is not required. CDFW did not meet that date. As a result, by law, you may now complete the project described in your notification without an agreement." So essentially, they missed a deadline, and it's kind of went through, approved by default. Is that the case in this specific letter?
I don't know that they missed a deadline as much as it's a small project and lower priority for them. And so I think the legal term is approved by operation of law. And I think that's related to the Permit Streamline Act that says, you know, these state agencies can't take forever to review and make comments or approve things, unlike the feds, like the U.S. Fish and Wildlife, that aren't, they're not subject to a Permit Streamline Act, which is why it's taken 14 months to, you know, close things out with them. I've worked as a consultant for a number of years in the Bay Area, and I've probably done a dozen of these lake and stream bed alteration agreements for a lot of different creeks on the peninsula. And I have yet to receive anything except approved by operation of law. So for these smaller projects, this is, this is really common.
Have you, in those 10 or so that you mentioned, have you ever had one that required you have more than a 25-foot riparian setback?
No, and I don't think that's in the California Department of Fish and Games jurisdiction.
No, but in the final outcome of those permits?
Oh, sure. We did one in Redwood City with zero setback.
Any above 25 feet?
Not that I can recall.
I'm curious if the, if your biological consultant is here, and I'd like to ask, Chair, if it would be appropriate for me to ask him a couple of questions at this time, or that waits, or that's no longer appropriate?
Well, I've got, it looks like at least one other question or comment from Commissioner Cooper. So why don't we go ahead and move to that right after we've had Commissioner Cooper's opportunity to make his comment or question?
Thank you, Chair. First of all, I'd like to thank you for going back and meeting with everybody. I think that shows a lot of responsibility as far as your development's concerned and changing things around, because I think it really shows that you're listening and that it's responsible that you're, what you're doing in that area. I do have a question in regards to the maintenance of this runoff and the maintenance of the street. Is this an HOA? Are you going to have an HOA? Is that how?
Yeah, there'll need to be an HOA.
So you guys are going to do that? Okay. That's my only question I have.
Yeah, it'll have CCNRs, and I think it's standard in Samhail County to actually enter into a maintenance agreement for stormwater management facilities.
Perfect. And now, to address Commissioner Clifford's response too, with the Roundup, that could be part of your CCNR agreement as well.
Oh, that's a good point.
Thank you. Mr. O'Connell, I think there was an interest in perhaps asking a question or two or receiving a little bit of information from your biological consultant or your, I guess that's what it was.
Yeah, Joe's here. He can come up.
Excellent. Fantastic. And maybe you could just introduce yourself for the record, and then we'll have a question.
My name is Joe Rigney with Toyon Consultants.
Thanks, sir. Commissioner Stedgen.
Yeah, in your, in your document on packet page 288, you mentioned that 25-foot setbacks are appropriate. And I'm curious how you came to that number.
That's pretty much the minimum that's allowed. And then, in terms of looking at this specific project, it seemed that that minimum was appropriate because of, as Mike talked about, the slope of the project and the way the grading is actually going to keep the water away from it. The additional requirements that the Regional Water Quality Control Board has put across the entire state, I guess it would actually be the state board that put across the entire state, in terms of the stormwater detention systems that are now required on all projects. So that helps keep pollutants down. And then, finally, the habitat itself that's being developed is extremely low-quality habitat for native species, particularly for rare species. So by including native plants into the buffer, he really is going to be increasing the habitat quality of that buffer, along with the habitat restoration that's going to occur within the creek itself as part of the mitigations.
I'll just give you a 10-second preface. My concern is primarily with the steelhead salmon in there. And I took a look at an awful lot of documents, state best practices, Fed best practices, a document called Local Government Riparian Setbacks in the San Francisco Bay Area. And I see an awful lot of them that are greater than 25 feet from... of them that are greater than 25 feet, Fremont-Alamito County 200-feet riparian buffer. Seems like this is absolutely the minimum. Would you classify this parcel as a floodplain?
No. My understanding is that specifically, this work that was done on this parcel where all of that fill dirt was put in the area that's being developed was to raise up the parcel above the floodplain, and the floodplain is what's down below what, I believe the document's called the top of the bank. There's effectively was made was a levee. It doesn't come up and go around like a typical levee does. It comes up and kind of flattens out, but essentially a levee was made, and the floodplain is down below that levee. There's no development going on within what would be considered the floodplain.
Can you speak briefly on what impacts this project would have on the Steelhead salmon in this area?
The only potential project that was identified on the Steelhead salmon was the building of the stormwater detention outlet into where it comes out at the creek, and that goes into an area that will only be, have water during high-water events. It's not going down into the typical channel that's there in the summertime. We had National Marine Fisheries Service come out and look at it, and National Marine Fisheries Service was actually very concerned initially when the project came forward from the Army Corps of Engineers, and were not able to give a letter of concurrence that there were no impacts without coming out, and they met with us, they looked at the site, and they determined there was no impacts to Steelhead from this project.
Have you done any projects in unincorporated San Mateo County?
Yes, I have.
What's the buffer zone for unincorporated San Mateo County?
I don't recall off the top of my head, but I have seen San Mateo County, I did specifically do a project that was about the buffer zone. I apologize for not being able to recall off the top of my head, because I work in many areas, and many areas have different buffer zones. But I do actually recall that the project that I worked on, even though my assessment indicated that the project was going to be within, not only the buffer zone, within the riparian habitat itself, they approved the project.
It's a maximum buffer zone you've been required by local governments to use on a project that you've been involved with.
The city of Santa Cruz has an extremely significant buffer zone requirement, and I've seen them use up to 100 feet.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir. I think at this point, while I don't see any further lights, and it looks like we've, for the moment anyway, gotten all the information we want from the applicant perhaps to return to that, I do have a speaker card for a member of the public, Paul Jones, who is interested in addressing this matter. If there's anybody else who's interested in speaking to the matter, please complete a speaker card or at least move towards the mic.
Good evening, members of the Commission and city staff and members of the audience. As you recall, I addressed you last time. My name is Paul Jones. I'm the current president of the San Pedro Creek Watershed Coalition, and as Mike reported to you just now, we had an opportunity to go in the field, and I wanted to thank him very much for being very gracious with his time. He and Dr. Jerry Davis and Roger Macio and I did a site tour, and then subsequent to that, as Mike mentioned, we've had several email exchanges in which, the most recent one is terms and conditions of this covenant that he referred to that may, you know, if it is appropriate and gets signed, may give the Watershed Coalition or any other entity, for that matter possibly, access to the creek should there be a need to get in there for creek restoration at some point in the future, and give us access to be more precise to the buffer area that's in control of the developers currently and then the homeowners in the future. And I just wanted to, I just expressed my thanks to Mike and let you know that we're very grateful for his willingness to work with us and listen to our concerns. That said, 25 feet really is a minimum. I'm not retracting from my comments last time I spoke to you about being concerned about any development in the watershed. I think that report that the Watershed Coalition had done for us by a Steelhead biologist in which he said, you know, this stream has been subjected to tremendous pressure from development, and we don't need any more. I think that's true. That said, I realize I only have one minute left, I'm going to have to hurry up. That said, I think that the applicant has done due diligence to do what is, what appears to be the maximum amount of avoidance and minimization. It's always appreciated. Moved that one structure pretty far away from the creek, and then when we learned that the stormwater is going to get directed away from the creek and there'll be improvements in the buffer habitat, it pretty much assuaged most of the glaring concerns we had about the project. So I just wanted you to know, so you could hear it from me as opposed to from somebody indirectly. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Jones, for your comments. Is there anybody else interested in speaking to this item? Okay, we always afford the applicant the opportunity to address any comments made. I don't know if there's any particular need to say anything further to what was just stated, but it looks like there isn't. Excellent. So I'll go ahead then and close the public hearing and bring the matter back to the, back to the Commission and hear the views of my colleagues on this. Anybody want to speak to this item or start off speaking to this item? Commissioner Clifford?
Since nobody else wants to go first, I will. One, I do want to say that I really like the changes that have been made to this project. I like moving that one lot closer to the street, and changing the cul-de-sac out for a hammerhead seems to be, made a very significant change in the impacts of the project in my mind. I am a little bit concerned about the 25-foot buffer. I know it's, there's an additional 45 feet or so to the middle of the creek. I remember that from our last meeting, but that's, if I could just get another 10 to 20 feet out of this, I would be much more comfortable with the riparian buffer. So that's sort of where I'm at right now. I actually love this idea of a covenant for creek restoration to be included in our decision-making, and I'll leave it at that for at this point.
Thank you. Commissioner Stegic.
I tend to agree with Commissioner Clifford. I think the buffer zone is inadequate here, and I probably would not vote for this proposal based on that. I've taken an awful, a look at an awful lot of projects done in California and the U.S. on there, and just in California, I find that this buffer would be on the absolute minimum of anything I've seen come across since 2006. Thank you.
Thank you. I don't see other lights. I'll go ahead and...
I'll give you one more.
Okay. Excellent. I actually do see some lights now. Commissioner Kraske.
Yes, I have a question for the planning department. Is it atypical to put a ruling on this type of development in the riparian zone without the 404, 401?
Microphone.
I'm sorry. Yeah, we'll need the microphone a little closer. Sorry.
Yeah, just a question for the planning department. Is it atypical in your opinion for a development project like this to be ruled upon before the 404 or 401 permit has been issued?
No, actually, that's more typical, is that the regulatory agency permitting process takes much longer and will be issued after the entitlement process, but before any building permits are issued.
Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Kraske. Commissioner Cooper?
Thank you, Chair. I just had a, kind of a condition that I was writing up here for the terms of the covenant. I'll just read it to you, because you can say no or add to it. The condition I had would be applicant shall submit a mutually acceptable agreement between applicant and the San Pedro Creek Watershed Coalition for access to designated buffer areas for future creekside improvements. The essence of the terms of this agreement are intended to apply to other agencies or groups as well, or something like that.
I think the general gist of it is fine. I did just, if I could, I just wanted to dovetail a question to the city attorney and to, and to staff. I thought I understood, maybe I misunderstood, that there were some concerns perhaps legally about the ability to fold this in as a condition of approval, and I'm curious about that, if in fact the applicant is sort of prepared to agree to it. Is it still problematic to include as a condition? Would it be something that they would just sort of work out as a private matter? What's the, kind of what's the legal deal on all that?
So I'll speak to my opinion, and that's not legal. And so there is essentially no solid nexus to this requirement. However, you know, if the applicant's willing to do so, we're not going to die on our sword and say, "Don't put this condition in." I would just ask that the language of the condition mentioned as agreed to by the applicant at the public hearing, this will, this should occur, and that would make me feel a little bit more comfortable about the nexus issue, and then I'll let...
Thanks.
There is no issue with the applicant agreeing to the condition.
Okay. So we, but we would want to articulate clearly this is as agreed in the context of, and I just want to make sure I kind of understood the full, well, I don't need to understand the full aspect of it, but sort of the general, is it sort of an encroachment permit? Is it a license? What kind of, and is, so it's something that the San Pedro folks could access, or frankly, any other agency or any other group that was looking to?
Yeah, I have a draft of it, which I can circulate to you if you feel like looking at it, but it's a non-exclusive agreement, so it would allow, you know, the Watershed Coalition or whoever's involved in whatever projects may come down the line, you know, access to, you know, do pre-construction surveys and design surveys, as well as, you know, the actual improvements, so.
So there could actually be improvements that are left in the buffer zone?
Correct.
Theoretically? Okay. All right. Commissioner Gordon?
Thank you, Chair. I had, let's see, two things to comment on. First, I'm in favor of including the covenant. I think it's, it's a great precedent to, I guess, acknowledge the collaboration between the applicant and what's ostensibly what, a nonprofit public, not not public, but a nonprofit environmental NGO or whatever. I think it's great, and so I'd love to memorialize it in terms of conditions so that we can reference it at some other point. It's a great precedent, so I'm in favor of that. I'm sensitive, it's interesting, Commissioner Stegic, Steg...
Stegic.
Kill your name every single time.
Close enough.
Well, to the comments raised by Commissioner Clifford and Commissioner Stegic on the adequacy of the riparian setback, my question, that seems to be a core, sort of a core issue. So my question to staff is, what agencies and experts have looked at the adequacy of that setback, and has that been, where is it discussed in the, in our packet so I can refer to it? Because obviously, this can't be the, you know, this has to have been looked at with some degree of exhaustiveness and by people who are much smarter than me.
So the, initially, through the SEQA processes, the majority of the review for the setback, and it's the applicant's biologist who establishes the criteria for designating that setback.
But he said it was the minimum setback, which didn't, that's necessarily an overwhelming recommendation.
So there's two forms of setback that local jurisdictions choose. In essence, one is a standard broad brush setback distance that they would establish over the entire jurisdiction or site-specific to particular habitats or creeks, and the other approach is for site-specific analysis by recorded professional to establish what the actual value of the resources are within particular areas, and that higher threshold of, and the professional review is what's occurred for the preparation of the SEQA document. So the applicant's biologist being the specialist and professional has reviewed the area, looked at the species that are required to be protected, and then proposed the setback accordingly. And it's the riparian habitat that's designated by the willows that's the value in the area, and that's the mark he's taken the setback from. So that 25 feet comes from the drip line of the willows, and that's the value of the habitat. Subsequently, the biologist's review is reviewed by a subconsultant biologist, and then the SEQA consultant, in addition, reviews that process as well. And I believe the SEQA consultant is here this evening. If you wanted to go into the details of the process more, it may be worth calling them for questions.
And so you said that, so the biologist who did the SEQA review is here?
The SEQA consultant, who in essence is the, I guess, the project manager for the SEQA, the production of the SEQA document.
Okay. That might be...
Well, it might well be something worth doing if it turns out that it was an issue that prevents us moving forward, certainly, or if you feel like, I certainly would defer to my colleagues if they thought it made sense to hear a little more about it. I wanted to make sure I understood, again, we have the Toyana consultants who we heard from earlier, and that's a consultant for the applicant.
The applicant, correct.
And then there was a subconsultant of the SEQA consultant, who is a biologist, consulting biologist.
Who isn't, not here.
Who is not here, but the SEQA consultant itself or himself or herself is here to, and they can speak generally to, so it sounds like a lot of folks looking at it would...
And I would add that as part of the regular SEQA process, it was reviewed, or there's an opportunity to review by various state and local agencies through the SEQA process, as well as the review that this project is getting by their, those agencies through their actual permitting process.
So I note on page 78, there's a list of, of the packet, a list of various agencies that have had an opportunity to chop on this and haven't themselves expressed any particular concerns.
But I'm sorry, just to interrupt for a second, there was a, it sounded like the agencies gave their approval by operation of, operation of law, basically by passing on it, right? Were there any agencies who actually affirmatively looked at it, affirmatively looked at the riparian setback and said, "That sounds good to us"?
I believe thus far, the National Marine Fisheries Service has issued a letter related to the project impacts that would be of concern to that agency, and the applicant has indicated that the U.S. Fish and Wildlife Service has passed its initial steps in its process to finalize its review by issuing the draft project description, which will follow to the biological opinion. And so they won't get permits and they won't develop if the U.S. Fish and Wildlife Service takes issue with the project, but that's not something that typically would conclude at this phase where the local agency is reviewing the project.
Okay.
And if I may, Mr. Chair, I think it's easy to react to the term minimum buffer, but it's the minimum because it is acceptable. If it was not acceptable, it would not be the minimum. Some greater figure would be. So sometimes more is better, but more is not necessary based on the evidence and the record in this case, and I think it's important to realize this is not a large site, and so this buffer that's already established from some point up bank of, from the creek bed, is already impacting a meaningful share of the site. To increase that buffer more would continually and progressively reduce the development potential of the site, and to do that would require some specific analysis on staff's part to make sure we're not rendering significant portions of the site unbuildable.
Well, I, just a few comments. I, I think like my colleagues, I'm very pleased by the collaboration that's taken place as between the applicant and members of the community, including those who are advocating protection of the environment. So I think it's a really helpful and good process that you all have engaged in, and I'm very gratified by that. I myself am comfortable with riparian setbacks. I think I was comfortable with the 25 feet even on the basis of the report, as we had it before. I think the additional information from Toyana and the opportunity to hear some more about the matter and to see staff's, I think really good kind of lay down of sort of the analysis really helped me to, well, just to become even more comfortable that 25 feet is an appropriate riparian setback. These setbacks, of course, always involve trade-offs, has been articulated, and I think the trade-offs here have been calculated appropriately, so I'm comfortable with... So I'm comfortable with the project, with the setbacks as articulated. I appreciated the additional information on where we are with the permits, and I'm comfortable that, again, perhaps most importantly, if, you know, if we cut things too fine and the feds are unhappy with the way we've cut things, then that'll come home to roost. So I think that the, you know, there's, there was every sort of incentive to try to get it right at this level. As a little, I guess, the one thing that remains a little uncomfortable to me had to do with the future lot subdivision and sort of the concern I had last time about whether or not we might end up with a future subdivision in the future. And I guess where, where that sits is that we really won't know unless and until somebody actually comes forward and tries.
That's right. Any, any concern about that is purely speculative at this point. Theoretically, based on the lot sizes, it's possible for a future subdivision to occur. Whether it's a large or a small subdivision, our municipal code would require a public hearing. And so whether that's before the planning commission or conducted by the city engineer, which is very rare.
Okay, even for a minor subdivision?
Given for a one-lot subdivision, or I guess a two-lot, one lot into two, it would require a public hearing.
Okay, well, I guess what I would say in conclusion is adding a condition of approval relating to the, the agreement or covenant or whatever we're calling it, I'd be prepared to, to move in favor of this, this project. Commissioner Stegic.
Yeah. Do you have a packet page number for that National Marine Fisheries letter of concurrence you mentioned?
All right, well, I, I don't see any other lights at this point. I'm, I believe that a motion would be in order if there, if there is one. Commissioner Cooper.
I'm ready to make a motion.
Please, go ahead.
I'll move to adopt the attached resolution, which would adopt the mitigated, negative declaration and mitigation monitoring and reporting program prepared for the project. Recommend city council adopt the ordinance included in exhibit A to the resolution approving general plan amendment GPA nine-three dash one-six and rezoning RZ one-nine-five dash one-six. Approve the tentative subdivision map SUB two-three-four dash one-six, subject to the conditions of approval included as exhibit B to the resolution with the added condition, hopefully I get this right. Applicants shall submit a mutually acceptable agreement between applicant and the San Pedro Creek watershed condition for access to the designated buffer areas for future creekside improvements as offered by the applicant in public hearing on one sixteen eighteen. The essence of the terms of these conditions are intended to apply to other agencies or groups for similar improvements. Approve the heritage tree removals with replacements and incorporate all maps and testimonies into the record by reference.
Excellent. I just want to make sure staff was, was okay with, again, sort of the articulation of that additional condition. Thank you. Commissioner Clifford.
Even though I would be more comfortable with a little more buffer, I am going to second that motion.
Excellent, thank you. We've got a motion to second. Why don't we go ahead then and, and vote? Okay, well, that, that motion was approved on a vote of five to one with Commissioner Stegic voting against. Thank you. And that'll move us then to our new public hearing, and this is use permit UP zero-nine-zero-one-seven and coastal development permit CDP three-eight-three-one-seven for the construction of a new dwelling unit with attached garage to create a two-family dwelling group at one-zero-six Bella Vista Avenue APN zero-one-six zero-two-one-three-zero-zero. The recommended SEQA action is a class-three categorical exemption pursuant to section fifteen-three-zero-three-A of the SEQA guidelines, and the recommended action is to approve as conditioned. Could we have a staff report?
Yes. Good evening, planning commissioners. I am assistant planner Bonnie O'Connor. This project includes construction of an approximately 1,500 square foot, two-story dwelling with an attached garage on a 7,700 square foot parcel located in West Sharp Park. The property has an existing approximately 960 square foot, single-story dwelling and a 600 square foot detached garage on site. The project does not include any changes to the existing dwelling or detached garage. The subject property is located in the two-family residential district and coastal zoning combining districts. The two-family residential district allows development of a two-family dwelling group, which has more than one main building, as a conditional use. The proposed project would create a two-family dwelling group as the new dwelling would not be connected to the existing dwelling. The proposed dwelling would be located in the western half of a generally flat parcel, which is currently undeveloped. The new dwelling would meet the development standards of the two-family zoning district, most notably lot coverage for the property would be 38%, which is below the 50% maximum, and height of the structure would be approximately 23 feet, which is below the 35-foot maximum. The property is designated for medium-density residential in the general plan and local coastal land use plan, program. Based on the size of the property, the addition of a dwelling to the property would bring the property into compliance with the general plan and local coastal land use plan. The design of the dwelling would be compatible with the various architectural styles in the areas by using similar exterior materials as surrounding existing structures. As condition, the property would be entirely landscaped for further, to further the cohesiveness between the two structures on site. Staff finds that the infill project would create a dwelling in an area that would provide for the use of alternative transportation methods due to its proximity to SAM trans routes and walkability to multiple commercial areas. The new structure would reinforce the existing residential character without threatening the affordability of existing dwellings. And the design and scale of the structure would out, add housing unit, would add a housing unit without overdeveloping the property. Staff recommends that the planning commission approve use permit and coastal development permit as condition and find the project exempt under the California Environmental Quality Act. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. O'Connor. I don't know if anybody has comments or questions at this juncture. Looks like Commissioner Stegic may have one.
I've read the application. I visited the site. I'll just say that's a very unusual site. They've got a hundred-foot parking lot with a school on one side. They've got a, looks like a tow lot full of cars on the other. They're on Palmetto. It's the smallest house on the block, and it's almost in rising height towards the highway. That tiny house, which is kind of a little cottage mismatch, two larger houses and a two-story that's roughly four or five times the size, three houses away. There's, I think this is appropriate for this area. I think this little house is the last one left in the neighborhood, and there's virtually nothing I would not approve to better that lot. Thank you. Thank you. Commissioner Clifford.
I did read on page three of the staff report that there's a partially non-conforming five-foot wood fence. What's, what's non-conforming about the fence?
In the front setback, our code requires that a fence not exceed the height of three feet or four feet of the top foot as an open work fence. So this does that.
Okay, and would that, that, that would be something that code enforcement would, would deal with if they had a complaint?
Correct.
Thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Cooper.
Yeah, I just had a question in regards to this new sidewalk per city standards. It looks kind of funky. What, what's the reason for that? And how come it doesn't, doesn't follow the street like a normal sidewalk would?
Ray Donginis from Engineering is here to help answer that question for you.
Oh, okay.
Good evening, Commissioner Raymond Donginis, Engineering Division. So I, I sketched that potential sidewalk alignment just to make sure that it, it fits within the, the space. But yeah, starting from the west side, there is an existing sidewalk already, so I'm following that towards the east. And then while the driveway kind of zigzag, that's my intention.
If he, if, if his architect came out and said, "Hey, you know what? That looks kind of funky. I just want to follow the sidewalk," or just follow the curb?
Yes, I just wanted to follow the curb, correct.
Okay.
Okay, thank you. Excellent, thank you. Any other comments or questions at this point? Okay, well, I think what I'll do then is go ahead and open the public hearing, and I'll invite the applicant to, to come and share any information or comments he cares to regarding the project.
Good evening, Brian Brinkman, agent for the applicant. I'll keep it short. The client, they bought the home in 2016, just started in their family. It was a great opportunity, and then that it zoned R2 just gave them options. So as their family's looking to expand, they were looking to either expand the existing house or to, you know, take advantage of the R2. And they liked the, the little house kind of how it was, and we didn't feel we could come up with any simple solution of expanding it with the existing garage and stuff back there. So we moved forward with, with the house you see today. We kept the footprint as, as small as we could, trying to minimize the impacts on the site. That's why it's two stories. But at the same time, we kept it as low profile as we can to try and minimize the height being next to the single story, and then also the house behind it is also a smaller single story. So just to try and minimize impacts there. We've gone with, with a contemporary style that kind of blends some of the, the two major predominant styles in the area. We've also oriented the living space just to try and maintain as much privacy with the unit next to them, with the people behind them, and also with the, the existing house on site. And then also to try and take advantage of the, the ocean view they have out there on the front. The project meets all the setbacks. It's way below the height limit, and it meets all the zoning codes. So happy to answer any further questions you might have.
Thank you, Mr. Brinkman. See if I've got a light here. Commissioner Cooper.
Hey, Brian, how are you?
Good.
Good. Looking at the overall pavers for that driveway, so are those previous pavers or they're just?
They're intended to be.
They're intended to be, okay.
Yes. I believe there's a condition in, the conditions of approval for that.
Yes, we're getting a nod, there is.
That's my only comment.
Okay.
Thank you. Anything else at this point? Okay, I don't see any others. I, well, and I don't have any speaker cards for this matter, and I don't actually see anybody rushing forward to address this on it. So it looks like we have no further comments at this point. So I'm going to go ahead and close the public hearing, bring the matter back to the commission. And it looks like Commissioner Clifford has a, a comment or a...
Actually, I wasn't the first light up there.
Let's go ahead, why don't you go ahead?
Okay, I'll go ahead. I, I just didn't want to jump in front of the line.
Completely my fault.
At any rate, I like this project. I think, think it meets all the requirements, and as soon as the rest of my, my fellow commissioners have had an opportunity to talk on it, I'd be willing to make a motion.
Thank you. Commissioner Cooper.
I am so glad you kept that little house. I think it adds a lot of character to the community. You're, you're maintaining something. I like the new building that you've done. I think it's a great use of this area. It's not overbuilt. It's, it's kind of a, just a little quaint little area. So I love this little house, and I'm glad you decided to save it. But besides that, I think this project is a, is a wonderful addition to the area, so.
Thank you. Any other comments or questions? If not, I guess a motion would be in order. Commissioner Clifford.
I move that the planning commission finds that the project is exempt from the California Environmental Quality Act. Approve use permit UP zero-nine-zero-dash-seventeen and coastal development permit CDP-dash-three-eight-three-dash-one-seven. By adopting the resolution included as attachment B to the staff report, include conditions of approval in exhibit A to the resolution, and incorporate all maps and testimony in the record by reference.
Thank you, sir. Looks like Commissioner Stegic has his light on.
Second.
Okay, we've got a motion to second. Why don't we go ahead and vote? And that is unanimously approved. Thanks very much. And that will, will take us then to the portion of the agenda for commission communications. Are there any commission communications? Commissioner Stegic.
I have another disclosure. I met with a developer named Javier Chivaria and discussed roughly nine of his projects in the San Francisco area. I'm curious also what the progress on ADUs is, what kind of response we've had in number of applications on there?
On what? I'm sorry.
The accessory dwelling units.
My colleagues here might have a better sense of how many we've received.
Yeah, a handful, maybe. I can't give you a specific number. It's been more than the historical level, which was very low prior to the recent updates to the state law regarding ADUs. So significant uptick, but not a large number overall.
Can I assume a handful is less than 20?
Yes.
Excellent. What's the current status on, on the recreational marijuana permits?
The city has a multi-phase process outlined on the city's website. We recently concluded phase one, which begins with the police department. The phase one process generally consists of identifying the applicant and conducting a fingerprinting and background check. Those applicants will progress to phase two, which has not started yet. I don't have the beginning date for that before me, but it's roughly three weeks from now, I believe. And those applicants that make it through phase two will be placed on a list, transmitted to the planning department. Applicants on that list may submit a marijuana use permit application to the planning department, and that's the point after which we, we would bring those applications to the commission.
It's my...
Just a clarification. So the, the phase one is not completed. It's the application deadline has passed, and so the chief of police will make his decision on those by February ninth. And there's about 34 applications that were received in total.
For both recreational and?
Mainly, mainly there for retail businesses. And I think that there are about two or so for manufacturing.
Okay. I'll, I'll note an extensive next-door thread on Shelter Cove and the access there and not bring it up further. I'm particularly concerned about SB one-sixty-seven, the new law, one of the new laws that the governor put out there. I'm going to, I'm going to read a small part of it. AB six-seventy-eight and SB one-sixty-seven are identical, and they require that local government provide developers with the list of any inconsistencies between a proposed project and all local plans, zoning, and standards within 30 to 60 days after the housing application is complete, or the project will be deemed consistent with all local policies. Called a poison pill or a default there. I'm interested in, at some point in the future, probably at the next meeting, I'll be asking the commissioners for a majority vote on a study session on extending those benefits of SB one-sixty-seven to homeowners, to residential homeowners and developers, in kind of a homeowner's bill of rights there. If I have two sons, and I do, I don't have to tell the second son that he's always going to be second. If I tell the first son, he'll always be first. And with the extremely limited resources that planning has, and the, the manner in which the 12 new laws from the governor put developers before homeowners in almost every instance, I think we have to do something to protect homeowners also in homeowner development here and make sure they're not always last, always the last priority, et cetera. So at some point in the future, not at this time, but probably the next meeting, and I'll let, let commissioners take a look at SB one-sixty-seven and AB six-seventy-eight, I'll be asking to agendize a special, sorry, a study session on that unless planning thinks a, a special session would be more appropriate.
So if I could just repeat what I think I heard to make sure I understood?
Sure.
Which is extending, streamlining benefits of similar to, or the same as SB one-sixty-seven to permits like remodeling permits, for example?
That's correct.
Things like that. Okay, I think, I, I understand, I'll look into it more, and I'll also bring this up to the city manager. We're, we're getting into the next annual goal-setting session with our city council, and so that might be another time to, to find out where that would sit on our priority list.
And not just remodels, but a single-family home construction where it's performed by the owner essentially. And I realize there may be some specific issues where that's not appropriate, but I think if we don't protect homeowners, then, well, you guys know the planning budget better than I do, but there's not a lot of extra room and extra hours to be built. And if developers are always going first, it means homeowners are always going last. And I think we need a homeowner bill of rights to protect homeowners. Thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Clifford.
Excuse me. I just wanted to report that I, I did go to the most recent library advisory committee meeting, and they did some dotting of i's and crossing of t's, and their recommendations are going to the city council at the next city council meeting, and I will be there. are going to the city council at the next city council meeting, and I will be there with the other members of the committee to make, you know, just to make it known that we all support the changes or the recommendations that are being made.
Well, allow me to continue to thank you for your work on behalf of the, well, the city and the commission with respect to that committee. I know it's important and just another, you know, use of your time, so we appreciate it. I don't see any other lights, so I'll pass them to staff communications.
Sure. So I just wanted to add one more, one more note on an upcoming meeting. On Tuesday, the 23rd, the sea level rise planning community work group will be meeting to talk about the draft vulnerability assessment. So this is a two-hour meeting scheduled for the work group, so depending on how quickly we get through their agenda, there may or may not be time for a limited public comment, but it is of interest if anybody in the, on the commissioner and the community would like to attend. And we will be announcing very soon the actual public workshop meeting where the public will be invited to participate sometime in February. And lastly, since we did the marijuana update, it is that time of year to start to plan for our annual report to the city council. And so I have four dates here for the council meetings in March and in April. So I can ask you to look at your calendars now, or if it's easier, I can send out an email sometime this week to see what council date would work best for the commission.
Chief, gentlemen, have your calendars? Would you prefer an email?
Email.
Okay, so an email.
We'll send you an email.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
I'm sorry, was that...
I just have a question on that. Is the, is the date of that planning report set in the bylaws as being in February?
It is set as February, but there's, there hasn't been a, you know, there hasn't been a hard date.
Got it.
Just depending on schedules and the agendas.
Well, thanks very much for the, for the update on those things. And that then takes us to adjournment. Is there a motion to adjourn? Commissioner Clifford?
I move that we adjourn.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Okay, motion second, let's go ahead and vote. Okay, unanimously approved, we're adjourned. Thank you.
That was a good meeting.